All right, a core being president, I'd like to call the special committee whole meeting to order. Our first item of business is approval of the agenda. Would someone like to move that we adopt the agenda moved by alternate director Finley, seconded by alternate director Duncan? Call the question, all in favor and opposed, not opposed, motion carries will now move on to public input. I think it's mostly staff in the gallery today. Any members of the public there? All right. So we'll skip ahead to reports and we're going to start off with a verbal report from the deputy CEO regarding the economic development service review. So turn it over to Mr. Postings.
Thank you, Chair. I just will very briefly just introduce what we're here to do. So I want to introduce Alan Nielsen from Nielsen Strategies and he is the, he's leading our service review of the economic development. So he will speak in a few minutes, he'll walk through that process. But prior to that, Barry O'Reardon and Brittany Taylor will just speak on in regards to the economic development strategy that's the draft strategy and you should have a, your, there's a report as well as the draft strategy within your, your agenda package. So just what I was just going to mention is the review that Alan has been leading commenced in May, the board will recall, and we are anticipating or planning that that final report will be in September. And this is just an opportunity to have a check in and provide some updates, but also if there's questions or any other information, this will be the time to provide that. And in relation to the strategic plan, as you recall, when we were discussing the service review, the one item that was in progress was the strategic plan. And so we haven't had a chance to come back to the committee here, so we're just bringing this information. It is really an information report at this time, recognizing that we will wait to see what the service review does and what direction that the board provides for that service review. So at this point in time, that, the draft service, we're happy to answer any questions, but the intent is just to present it here and that will come back at a later date. So what I'll do, if it's okay, I'll hand it over to Mr. O'Reardon and I'll let him walk through his presentation.
Just going to get the presentation up here. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair and Directors. As you see, the purpose of today's report is to provide an update on the EDC strategic plan process. So to note, just as Clayton did, that while the focus of today's meeting is centered around the EDC service review, staff wanted to give this update to provide an early draft of the EDC strategic plan. This draft represents the current direction of the strategic plan based on stakeholder engagement and research conducted to date. So I want to emphasize that the board will have an additional opportunity to provide input on the draft once the service review process has been completed. So today I'll provide some background on the plan development process and a high level overview of the current draft plan to give a sense of where the process has taken us thus far. And we'll be open to some high level questions at the end, recognizing that we're keeping the primary discussion on the service review today. So the project timeline, so here we'll just have a brief look at the timeline for the strategic plan update. The project was initiated in December 2023 and consists of three phases, research, engagement, and strategy development. The research phase was completed in March 2024, included document review, analysis of economic data and trends in the region. And then the engagement phase for the project began in April 2024 and included three surveys, stakeholder interviews, and six focus groups. The project team also coordinated and attended engagements for other processes taking place concurrently in the region, including the Arts and Culture Master Plan and the municipality of North Couchin's Economic Development Action Plan project. And referrals were sent to all the First Nations and staff met with each nation that responded to discuss their economic development priorities. And then just a reminder in terms of board engagement thus far, staff and the consultants met with the CVRD Electoral Area Directors and Municipal Directors in small groups through June and September 2024 to gather additional feedback based on the engagement. And then a project update was provided to the CVRD Committee of the Whole in July 2024. So the engagement phase then concluded in September 2024 with a workshop of key implementation partners, which provided feedback on the draft framework for the plan. So we're now, I was in the strategy development phase and the preliminary draft has been reviewed by CVRD and municipal staff with feedback received included from municipalities included in the, in the staff reports in front of you. This project was initially anticipated to be completed in early 2025, however, however the timeline shifted in response to the initiation of the service review. So when the service review is completed, when, sorry, when the service view was confirmed, staff were given direction to continue to work to complete the strategic, strategic plan concurrently with the, the service review. Okay, now it's on some key findings from the research phase of the project. So demographic trends in the Couchin region present some obstacles to economic development. The population has a high average age rate and almost half of all residents 15 or older are not in the labor market. So this low participation make rate constrains the local labor supply. There are, however, opportunities to reverse this through programs for seniors and youth. Population in the Couchin region is growing and is expected to continue to expand in the coming decades, potentially reaching another 9,000 residents by 2046. There are opportunities and challenges, of course, related to this growth. The regional economy must address the aging population and make conditions more attractive for younger residents. It must also deal with the housing affordability, lagging wages, and elevated unemployment, particularly for youth. In the region, industrial land, as we know, is constrained and there's distinct lack of serviced industrial land, which is crucial for inward investment and of employment generating activities. So protecting, preserving, and making better use of existing service, industrial land will be key to accommodating future economic activity and high wage job growth. The region is undergoing a period of economic transition. Traditional industries such as forestry continue to face distinct challenges, while sectors like agriculture and the marine economy are consolidating. Also, tourism has yet to fully recover from the pandemic, constrained by the lack of accommodation options in the region. Meanwhile, technology and professional services are gaining momentum. However, for the region to successfully shift towards a more knowledge-driven, low-carbon economy, increased private investment in green, innovative, and tech-oriented initiatives will be essential. As for engagement, key themes we heard from engagement centered around the shortage of skilled workers and housing, regulatory infrastructure challenges such as transportation and servicing, the need for alignment between education and the skills employers need in the workplace where there's a mismatch right now, a call for a unified regional planning, improved public-private collaboration to address systemic issues, and also the need to foster entrepreneurship, adopt new technologies such as AI, and support emerging sectors like film, agri-tech, and marine tourism to enhance resilience. And also the need to balance economic development with sustainability concerns, along with deeper economic participation of our indigenous communities. Taking all the inputs from the research and engagement brings us to this early draft of the EDC strategic plan, which is structured under five themes. We're going to touch on the themes at this point and get into more detail once the EDC service review has been completed. So first one here, advancing reconciliation. So following the lead of the EDC corporate strategic plan, we seek to advance indigenous reconciliation through collaborative economic development initiatives. The second one here is business retention, expansion, and attraction. Here, the focus is to enhance support for existing businesses and nonprofits, empowering them to thrive and grow in the region, to strengthen the local labor market by coordinating workforce development initiatives in partnership with key stakeholders, and to stimulate investment in growing economic sectors. Sector innovation, sector development innovation is next, and this theme will be realized by fostering an innovation ecosystem to diversify the economic base and by strengthening competitiveness and sustainability across strategic sectors. For strengthening communities, the next theme, here we would seek to enhance the capacity of community groups and municipalities to act on new community infrastructure, business investment, and community economic development opportunities, as well as to take an active role in the strategic initiatives of the CVRD that have a direct impact on economic development. And then finally, communicating our story. So this is an important component of economic development. We both need to effectively communicate the value and opportunities to live, invest, and expand business within the region, but also effectively report EDC activities to the community and partners. To do this, we will refresh the economic development Couchin online presence to improve access to business support and investment attraction resources, and finally enhance the strategy reporting mechanism to inform and engage partners and the community. So some next steps, so in March 12th, 2025, the board resolved to proceed with a formal service review of the economic development function. This review, as you know, should be completed by September 2025, which Alan will get into, and the results may have implications for the implementation of the EDC strategic plan. So once the service review, EDC's and EDC's operational capacity is confirmed, this plan that we have here will be revised as needed and more detailed actions will be shared with the board. We're keeping a pretty high level today. Also to note, the cost to implement the draft strategic plan has not been yet determined. So if directed by the board following the service review, when the final draft plan is ready, staff can review this plan and explore the financial considerations of implementation. So welcome, any questions you have, just noting that we want, may want to keep the discussions to a minimum to give enough time for the service review questions.
Great, thanks, Mr. O'Reardon. Any questions or comments regarding the presentation? Director Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Barry. Well, there you are.
Hi.
There are two points that are in the report and also that were in your presentation. There are numbers two and three, which was business retention. Can you, can you, is any way you can comment on what's been achieved there? For instance, how many new businesses may have been attracted or how many businesses may have expanded? And I don't mean, I'm talking about industrial type businesses, not the, you know, the fast food or whatever, something which has got a real, those businesses.
Thank you for the question. I think I've heard this question from you in the past and yeah, this is one that is always difficult to, to measure the, the overall growth of specific industries, but all that's contained within Statscan info and we are seeing growth in businesses across the region, but I don't have specific information on industrial businesses growth.
Okay. And follow up, please, Mr. Chair. And you mentioned housing as well. This is one of the things that is a big, big thing, obviously with the, the new hospital coming along and places for workers to, to live. How closely, if at all, does Ekdev work with our planning department or advocate on behalf of developers to try and get things moved along? Do you work with planning on, on this kind of thing and say, look, we need this, we need that?
Yeah, we're, there's a development review team within the CVRD and economic development staff sit on that table and contribute to that as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Director Wilson, we, I have been in discussions with Island Health to get more precise numbers around that because, I mean, there's obviously going to be a bigger staff and complement at the new hospital, but they are anticipating a lot of those workers are already live in the valley and they're going to be transferring over from health facilities and the Nanaimo Regional District and the Kapla Regional District. So it doesn't mean we're not going to have, you know, new people from off the island say moving here to take up those positions, but there is, they're anticipating there is going to be some movement here on the island in terms of, again, the existing facilities and people who already live in the valley and have, have housing here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
I agree. I understand that fully, but that still means, and my, my feeling is that we will still be understaffed and we will need more staff there. It's a big facility and it's got lots of departments that we don't have right now. In order to attract new, new labor, and it's not just the higher end, the doctors, the nurses and all the rest of it, this is the, the janitors, that all the other people that we need to attract to make sure that that hospital is the number one place in this area for people to go to. Without the housing, we're not going to be able to do that. So even if we staff it at 80%, it's not good enough. I'm sorry, it's not.
Yeah, maybe we debate this another time, but we've got an unemployment rate on the rise across Canada right now, and there may be many local workers who already live here who may be, want to take advantage of those job opportunities.
Good.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
So Mr. O'Reardon, if your presentation's finished, now a good time to turn over to Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome, welcome Alan Nielsen, who's been leading this service review of the economic development Couchin function.
Thank you very much, Chair Douglas. I'll just work with Rebecca here to get these slides up for my part of the presentation. And thank you very much to the, to the board or the committee as we're sitting right now for having me back today. It's always a pleasure to be here on the island in the Couchin Valley. So we are here today, as you've mentioned, Chair, to talk about the service review. So as soon as we get her going here, we'll just jump in. No, that's not it. No.
It's just right.
No.
Right here.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you very much. Excellent. Okay. Wonderful.
Here's these arrows.
Super. Thanks so much. All right. Thank you very much, Chair. Let me just outline, if I may, a little bit of a game plan or a proposed game plan for the presentation today. And Chair, if it's, I know we're sitting in a committee and that's really good because committee tends to be a forum in which we can be a little bit more informal, and so I'm hoping as we get through the presentation and start having a little bit of discussion, that we'll be able to be a little bit informal at your, at your discretion, of course. Wonderful. Let me talk a little bit, I'll start by talking a bit about the assignment. And so Barry introduced that a little bit, Clayton introduced that as well, and we'll just talk a bit more about what exactly I'm looking at. The approach and the work to date, I'll comment on that. The context, I'd like to set the context a little bit. Barry's previous presentation just talked a little bit about some of the context points for the strategic plan. I'm going to introduce a few other context points as it relates to the service specifically and the review of the service. Preliminary findings, that will be an important part, and so we'll spend a little bit of time going through those findings. And then I'd like to, if, if we could, spend a little bit of time on discussion because my purpose today here is twofold. One is to provide an update, but the second and equally important, perhaps even more so, is to have some discussion and get some further input from directors around the table. And then finally, we'll end with some next steps. Mr. Chair, just in terms of assignment, as has been mentioned already by both Clayton and by Barry, that I've been asked to do a review, a service review of the economic development function, and that's the function 121 that we know of as economic development Couchin. So that's the, the package, if you will, or the vehicle, and then it has a number of different activities and services within that. So looking at economic development Couchin as the focus of the service review, and it's, I think, always helpful to understand that when we are dealing with regional district services, they are brought together, particularly the service such as this one, which is voluntary, meaning that jurisdictions choose to participate in this service when it's in their interest to do so. When we develop services, when we establish services that are voluntary in nature at the regional district table, they always reflect the conditions that are in place at the time at which it was established or at which it was last reviewed. So it's always helpful and healthy, in my view, to do periodic reviews of services because underlying conditions change. Growth occurs in one part of the region and not in another part. Population occurs and one to, interests, people around the tables at both this table and at the municipalities change, and their interests change, and their desires change. So while all of those conditions change, it's helpful to go back and say, okay, do we have a common vision for this service? Are we focused on the things collectively we wish to focus on? The costs, is it equitable how we're paying for this service and how we're governing it as well? How do we share a decision-making authority over this service? All of those things come to the fore in this kind of review. More specifically, I have been asked as part of this service review to do a few things. One is to assess the existing services. In other words, is there, is there a sense of value? Are the participating jurisdictions and perhaps the broader community that the jurisdictions represent, is there a sense that they're receiving value from the services that are provided through economic development Couchin? What are some changes to the scope and/or the level of services that are provided? I want to spend a little bit of time on this one today and the preliminary findings because how we package this function really, I believe, is key to the success of the function. I've been asked as well to look at the delivery model. So right now, as the board knows and as, or committee knows, the economic development Couchin is set up as a separate entity within the CVRD. So it's part of the Corporate Services Department, but it's a separate part and it's physically located offsite, as, of course, in downtown Duncan. So I've been asked to look at that delivery model and determine whether that is, or advise on whether that is the most effective way to deliver this service in order to have it achieve what it is the participating jurisdictions wish it to achieve. And then assess related issues that may arise, and some of those issues I think are going to relate to our costing model, our cost allocation model, how we share those costs, and also how we govern this service, not only from a board perspective, but what kind of advice do we get from different parties and how do we bring that into our decision making around this service? So those kinds of issues make up the focus of my work on the service review. In terms of the approach, fairly straightforward, starting off with the review of a number of different materials going back several years, because this service, as the board knows, I think has been here now since 2002, so it's been in place for some time. So going back, not all the way to the beginning, but more recently, at some of the challenges perhaps, and some of the successes as well, and just how we're structured and, and what gave rise to this service review as well, those kinds of ideas. And I, we do all of this because we want to create a profile of the existing service, buying into the premise that before we can figure out what we want to become, it's very helpful to understand what we are today, and that allows us to identify tension points and pressure points and things that we may want to change. I have interviewed all directors and thank you very much to all directors. Every interview I can, I can honestly say really brought forward a lot of thoughtful information, a lot of very helpful information to inform some of the findings, and I look forward to kind of hearing a little bit more from folks today and then using that to, to talk going forward about some of the possible changes to the service. So interviewed all directors, but also a range of partners, so we can anticipate or you can anticipate and understand that there's what we might call an economic development ecosystem in the Couchin Valley. And that ecosystem includes local associations such as chambers of commerce and business improvement areas in some places, but it also includes agricultural groups, it includes education groups, it includes provincial agencies and so forth. And all of those agencies and groups play some role or another in economic development, broadly speaking, and so it's helpful to understand who does what, because we always want to try to avoid duplication and make sure that we're filling gaps. And then parties and other stakeholders, some parties, so I, I've reached out to and I connected with, with a few of the First Nations in the, in the Couchin Valley, and that was very helpful, understanding their perspective from economic development, also what it is they're doing in terms of economic development. So I spoke, had very good interviews with the Subisat, for example, and also with the Malahatt Development Corporation and learned a lot from those parties. And then other stakeholder groups in the region too, connected in some, in many ways to, or in some cases to the different partner organizations at different levels of government. So lots of different interviews, over 25 people spoken to thus far, and I anticipate probably some additional interviews and with some of the folks I've already spoken to. Here today to brief the board, facilitate some discussion around some of the findings. And then from this point, Chair, I'll be assessing the themes from the research, from the interviews, and for the board discussion, and coming back to the board in September with a full report. Allow me, if I could, just to talk a little bit about context, and when I say context, what's the environment in which we are operating in? What are some of the points that will inform how the review was put to, or have informed the kind of the call for the review and how the review has been structured, but will also help guide us going forward, or at least things that we'll need to be mindful of going forward? The first one is, and none of these is going to be a surprise to people, I think, around the table, so because you live this all the time, we've got a very large region. Lo and behold, it's a large region, lots of different jurisdictions. We've got a bit of a mix of rural, urban character, range of different needs, of course, depending on jurisdiction, depending on what part of the regional district we're living in, lots of different interests, lots of different expectations. Expectations perhaps should even be underlined there because we do have differences in terms of what we expect of this service, and we'll get into that a little bit as soon as we talk about some of the findings. There's another part for context, a different understanding or different understandings across, across participating jurisdictions, so the electoral areas and the municipalities, but also on the part of many of the partners and stakeholders and other groups that participate in the broader economic development ecosystem of the area. So different understanding of what economic development is. That is, so kind of what it is, what it's, how we, how we action it, what it isn't. So everybody, and economic development is one of those, it's one of those service areas that defies easy description because it can be lots of different things. And so what's important for the board is to ensure that, that what you want it to be has some, some buy-in from, from your colleagues, of course, and from the other jurisdictions because it can be so many different things. Another key contextual point, Chair, is we are operating, and this is, of course, no surprise to people around the table, we are operating in a tight, in a tightening budget, budgetary environment. And that kind of environment, that fiscal environment, which, and it looks like it's going to be around for some time, that fiscal environment results in competition for resources. So when we think about the service itself, we see competition among jurisdictions for the time of, of Barry and his group, and, but we also see then competition between and among services. Should we be putting money here when it could be here? Those kinds of ideas, and that's, that adds to a little bit, adds a bit of pressure to the whole discussion, but it also forces us to be really crystal clear on what it is we want this service to do and, and what we wish it to achieve and how we're going to measure it. And that's a perfect segue to this next point because we are dealing here with a service that is inherently difficult to measure. It's very difficult to draw the connection points between cause and effect or between investment and return. A lot of the stuff we do from an economic development perspective and for economic development is putting in place the conditions for growth to occur. A lot of it's upstream, and it's very difficult to look upstream and then look downstream and draw that connection point in every case. We see it in other services like healthcare, for example. When you invest upstream in healthcare, you get a healthier population. That's not always going to be evident when you look downstream at the different things you can measure, and economic development is similar in that respect, or in some cases at least it can be. Other parts of economic development are going to be easier to measure, but economic development writ large is inherently difficult to measure. The other contextual point here, which I think is helpful to remember as we go through this exercise, is that we've got a service while it's been around for some time and has some profile, it's relatively limited in terms of its budget and in terms of its staffing. So we have a service that of about $750,000, which is not a laughing matter by any stretch. It's a, it's a significant amount of money, but compared to a lot of our other services and compared to other economic development services that we see in other regions and other, and other municipalities across British Columbia and beyond, it's not a huge amount of money. So that forces us again, concentrates our minds to think what it is we can do with that amount of money to be most effective. And finally, I think this is the last contextual point here, is I've talked about it already. We've got an economic development ecosystem, but what we see within that ecosystem are not only different agencies, but also varying capacities. We've got some agencies in there, some players that, who offer quite a bit and are very strong, and we've got others who are less strong. And shoring that group up is, is tempting to do, but not always our job to do that. So when we think about that ecosystem, it's important to understand where we fit within that and where we, and the role we play and the role we don't play in that ecosystem. and where we, and the role we play and the role we don't play in that ecosystem. I'll move on now, Chair, if I could, and just talk about some findings. And I want to, I do want to emphasize at the outset, and this is, I hope doesn't come across as a cop-out, but this, these are preliminary findings. And I mention that only because, as Barry mentioned and Clayton mentioned, the, the work began in May. We're in June, we've got a couple more months of solid work on this before we come back to the board. So I fully anticipate that, well, I'm going to test these findings on you today. And these are the findings that I've come to thus far. This list is going to change, it's going to be refined, it could be expanded, it could be shortened. But let's start with what we've got here as some preliminary findings. The first is, and these findings, I should say, just to reiterate as well, a key point. And that, and that is that, that the findings come from the research, but they also come from the interviews and even more so from the interviews, frankly, because when we're talking about this service review, it's less about a technical service review, it's less, it's less of a technical thing, it's more of a, what do we want this service to be and what are our misgivings about the service? And so that leads us very much into putting great emphasis on what I hear from the individual directors and from the other players in the ecosystem. But in particular, the individual directors, because this is a regional district service, it's a government service. The first finding is related to what the service is and what it does. There's a lot of uncertainty about what it is and what it does. And people, directors were very honest and open with me, and I appreciated that candor very much because it helps us with, with the job at hand. And that is, what is this service and what does it do? I'm not clear. And there could be, and that, that's not, and I want to just, I, I want to state as an overarching comment that throughout all of the interviews, there was real support for Barry and his team. And so this is not any reflection on whom we've got in place providing the service. It's, it's more of a reflection on how we direct the service, how the service has evolved, how priorities are set, those kinds of things. So all of those, all of those inputs result in this first finding, which is just a lack of, a lack of understanding of what the service is. On the whole, the, the individual directors of the regional district, but also the jurisdictions, and feel less, that they've had a less than optimal role in setting priorities and giving direction. So a sense that we're not sure, first of all, what it is and what it does, but we're also not sure about what we should, we, we don't feel we have the right amount of input into the service or ability to oversee the service or to direct the service. That concern arose, I think, or is connected to the feeling that we want to hear more from the service. We want to understand how the monies are being spent. We want to understand the activities that are going on. It also comes back to the strategic plan, the draft of which we are seeing unveiled or putting together, we're in the process of putting together now the sense that we, while there has a process that, that has, that has gone on, while there has been some consultation, collectively, directors haven't felt that the consultation has given them, has been effective at giving them real input into, into what is important and to determining what is important for the service. So some concern there about the priority setting and the role of the elected officials. When we look at any service, when we look at, when we look at any regional district service or any shared service for that matter, we have a number of key components that are common to every shared service. One is the vision of the service. So what is the vision that we want to, to achieve or that we're trying to achieve through this service? Another is cost, what's the cost of service? And more importantly, how do we pay for it together? Who pays what? A third would be governance. So how do we make decisions for this service? What is the role of the individual directors and the jurisdictions? And are others involved in providing advice in that decision-making process? A key one is the scope of the service, the definition of the service. What exactly are we doing? This goes back to the, to the earlier point about what is it and what does it do? But what we find from a different, slightly different angle when we talk about scope is that we've got a very broad scope of services. And, and when we think about economic development, we can think about it at a regional level and we can think about it at a local level. And if we have, if we kind of scan out and look at different economic development agencies around British Columbia, but also around Canada and beyond, we see there at the regional level, they tend to, because their focus is the broader region, they will look a little bit more upstream. They'll do things such as convening tables, they will support sectors and they'll do that through convening tables and through advocacy, advocacy. So advocacy is another very big one. Bringing together information that people can use in decision-makings is a key one. So these kinds of activities occur at a broader scale and they tend to help put in place the conditions for economic growth to occur. They provide information that other players in the economic, in the economic ecosystem or the, the regional economy can use to make decisions. When we think at, at a local level, we tend to think more about the specific activities that are a little bit more tangible that can occur within individual communities. Reaching out to businesses, meeting one-on-one with businesses, understanding what their concerns are that day or that, that year, like how can we help you shore up your business or be stronger as an individual business within a community? Looking at developing certain lands in a community. Those kinds of activities happen typically more at a local level. At a regional level, by the way, too, that can happen, another, another function that can be very effective at a regional level is promotion. So how do we promote the region to potential investors? How do we bring in investors to the region, not specifically to an individual community within the region, but to the broader region? Those kinds of activities, labor force assessment, housing assessment, all those kinds of activities that are important to set the conditions for development and investment to occur that can be done at the very broad level for the entire regional economy. Those tend to be things that we focus on at a regional table. At a local level, it's much more focused and much more hands-on with individual businesses. So we've got a very broad scope of services and this relates back to the expectations with some jurisdictions feeling that that broad scope and many stakeholders and other parties, by the way, feeling that that broad scope offers, sorry, the, the, the regional level activities offer a lot of value and give, and make the, make the service important because they backstop some of the individual initiatives that others will be doing. Other jurisdictions feeling that where the service may be failing is it's not on the ground enough in the individual communities. And that's can be very difficult because that requires a lot of staff power. And we have a limited service here with a limited staffing. But when we expect staff to be on the ground, meeting with businesses, those kinds of things, those, that, that can be really taxing. I talked earlier about, from speaking with, with the, the, not only the directors here, and not all directors, by the way, but, but, but with, with some directors feeling this way, but also with many of the other agencies feeling this way, those regional economic development efforts being supported is being valuable, less certain about the local, less certain about the on-the-ground in the areas. You see this when you, when you talk to some of the other economic development players, by the way, whether it's the First Nations Development Corporations, whether it's the Chambers of Commerce, the, the others, they will say, they will tell, or they told me at least, that, look, you guys focus on the big stuff. We've got the little things. We've got the, we've got, we've got the, in, in the community stuff. We'll deal with the businesses on a one-on-one basis. You guys, we need you up here. And so you see a lot of support for that division there. The sector focus is when we look at our existing strategic plan and when we look at the draft plan going forward, we see that there's a focus on different sectors. One of the sectors is agriculture and all things related to agriculture, so agritourism, agrofood, those kinds of things. Other than other one is tech, and then we've also got value-added wood manufacturing, some other kinds of sect, we've got tourism, we've got film, we've got a number of different sectors. We've got actually quite a few sectors, which may be a bit of an issue in and of itself. But in some cases, agriculture was highlighted by most people as being very valuable, the efforts that EDC, the Economic Development Couchin, in partnership with Vancouver Island University, with provincial government, with other agriculture-related stakeholder groups are seen to be very important and it's setting the stage for investment in that industry and the growth of that industry of that sector. Others, less, seen as less valuable, seen as, as not effective, tech being an example of that. This area not being seen by most as a tech sector, the potential for tech being questioned by many people, and so folks not feeling that the investment in that particular sector is useful. I won't go through all the different sectors, but more just to say that the focus on different sectors varies based on the sector, the value perceived. When we think of going back to some of those regional functions or, or the, the types of activities we would typically see at a regional economic development service, such as this one. And there are some in the province, not a lot, but there are some. We've got Central Okanagan Economic Development Corporation, for example. We've got the South Island Partnership in, in the Greater Victoria area. We've got a few others around the region. There's more in other provinces, many more in other provinces where it's more common, Ontario in particular, also down in the States where we see lots of different regional economic development services. And in those cases, and here, we see that kind of creating the intelligence or the knowledge base that others can use to make decisions, the advocacy for the region, for different sectors, but also for the region as a whole, for, to put in place the conditions for economic growth. The coordination, the convening the tables, bringing together different tables, which may be sector-specific or maybe more general in an economic development sense. The partnering, so leveraging the efforts of others, getting behind others, whether it's VIU, whether it's an agriculture group, whichever it is, all of those kinds of things seen as being very important. When we get into the place and we're getting a little bit into the delivery of the service or the placement of the service within the CVRD. As I mentioned, the CV, the, the Economic Development Couchin right now is a standalone unit within corporate services within the Couchin Valley Regional District. As a regional district service, it is ultimately governed by the Board of Directors. When I talk to the Board of Directors, what I'm hearing from folks is that oversight, integration, important to most, not all, but to most. So the idea that if we're going to have this service and if we wanted to do what we wanted to do, let's figure out what that is and then let's also make sure that we are, have a good oversight, good line of sight to it, is keeping us informed regularly. We've got some measures in place that we can assess it, all of that kind of important. So that would inform the delivery question in terms of the desire on the part of many to keep it in-house, to keep it as a separate unit that can report ultimately to the board. Others, a few others were more attracted to a kind of a corporation model, separating it from the corporation, more arms-length, some dispersing the elements or the different services throughout the organization. But in general, most saw it as something that was helpful to have as Economic Development Couchin, but just different than what it is today. When we think about, and this relates back to the previous point of, of that oversight, but also the, as part of that oversight, really understanding what's being done in the service, hearing from the service regularly. A number of folks talked about the concern that they're not hearing enough back from the service. And so that communication to the board, but also to the member municipalities being really important because the member municipalities, of course, the electoral area directors and the electoral areas of the jurisdictions get the information here, this is your table here. Of course, we have, we have directors from the municipalities as well, but we also have the municipalities themselves, the municipal councils and as member jurisdictions who are going to, in some cases, increasingly, we see with North Couchin, we see with Lady Smith, increasingly doing their own thing as it relates to economic development at a local level. That coordination, that constant communication is going to be really important. When we look at other areas with regional economic development functions, we will see, for example, in the Okanagan, the Central Okanagan Economic Development people will be regularly in front of City of Kelowna Council, City of West Kelowna Council, because it's important to keep those stakeholder bodies, those participants in the fold and, and informed of what's going on at the regional level so that their efforts can be tailored, taking that into account and not duplicating what may be done. As a final point with respect to findings, and this point relates to the idea that a key value in economic development is to create the conditions for development to occur. And there's a perception somewhat widespread on the part of directors that we have too many barriers in place to economic development occurring. So the more we can streamline the things we do ourselves here as a regional district and in our member municipalities as well, the more we can make sure that our processes are tight, the more we can ensure that we're advocating on behalf of business. And also that in all of our decision-making, we have that economic development lens, the better we will be at reducing those barriers and allowing that economic development to occur and putting in place the framework for that, that economic development to occur. There are a number of other findings, I'm sure, that are going to come to the fore as we continue to research and connect with people and have discussions, such as the one we're hoping to have today. But I'll, I'll end there, Mr. Chair, and, and I wonder if, if I could now turn to the discussion section and, and follow up those previous slides with a few questions. And I can ask for your guidance, Chair. Do, would you be comfortable if I facilitated this part or would you like it to go through you?
Yeah, I think your suggestion at the start of the meeting, we can keep it fairly informal. I'm fine either way.
Okay, perfect. It may just be easier that if, if I answer directly rather than always going through the chair.
Yeah.
And then you can participate fully as well.
Of course.
Okay, wonderful. Well, on that note, let me jump in and, and ask, and these are not rhetorical questions. I actually want feedback from people, depending on the feedback. Do these findings resonate with you? That's the first question.
So I'm going to let you facilitate it because I've got this system set up here. I'm going to have to.
Oh, okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay, yes, of course, because we are, we are online, so we need to, we need to, and we have a limited number of microphones we can have on at any particular time. Okay, well, this will test your, your technical acumen, or at least it would mine, so.
Director Deck, over to you.
I just want to say you've captured what I feel is the essence of everything, very objectively. And I've heard bits and pieces of what you've just summed up over, you know, those little amount of time I've been here. So I'm just really grateful for this report, even though it's preliminary. I think it's really valuable. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Director Deck. And on that note, we'll end the day, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Director McGonigal.
You did say it was informal, so he did adjourn the meeting, so. There's popsicles in the freezer. You spoke briefly about tech.
Yes.
I think we have enough tech at the board table already. Just in reference to the interviews, I know that you reached out to all directors, but I think it's important that those preliminary findings also go back to the member municipalities that can be discussed within their councils and perhaps other ideas can come forward. So I would like to refer the preliminary findings to member municipalities to present to their councils for information and their council input. And if I have a second here, I'll speak to it.
Good second, continue.
And I think it's important to not only get the view of those who sit around this table, but those who also reside in the member municipalities who may have an economic development function within their purview. Lady Smith, you spoke of North Couchin, for instance, and a collaborative approach in the West between Lake Couchin and Subassut First Nation on their economic development and how the coordinated effort could encompass possibilities for all involved. So I, I believe that that would be pretty important information to come back to you on the final findings, on, on where and when the service moves forward and what direction. So thank you for that.
Thank you. If I, if I may, Chair, through, to, through you, to Director McGonigal. I think that's a really good idea. I think that when we, when we, there's two schools of thoughts on that. One is that this is a regional district service, this is the governing body, this is the table that makes decisions for the service. That is both legally and functionally accurate. On the other hand, when we look at services and when we think about voluntary services in particular, jurisdictions matter. So the individual municipalities matter because they ultimately, when you establish a service, they need to be the ones to say, we are into this service. If we go by, if we extend that, that, that point then to say, while we look at a service review, which may, and I think probably will, end up in rethinking and possibly redesigning the, the focus of the service, the, the scope of the service, if you will, and the purposes of the service, the vision of the service even to some degree, then I think that there is a legitimate role for the member jurisdictions, the councils, to also weigh in on what they feel are some of the issues.
And if I could just echo Director McGonigal's comments there, I think the challenge for the, the mayors on the, the board here is that we, we were interviewed as part of the process and had great discussion with Mr. Nielsen here. However, even though we are the spokespeople of our, our respective councils, we are just one perspective and each one of us has a number of folks we work with, some of whom do have, you know, strong opinions or expertise on economic development. And it would be great to, to capture that as part of this whole process. And in the end, if they are involved, you're going to have a lot more, a lot more buy-in for the, the process and, and some of the, the recommendations that come out of it. So we can continue debating the referral motion or we can call the question on it and then kind of move on to the next part of the discussion. Yeah. To Director Segal.
I guess I'm just wondering if there's an added cost? I don't know if that goes to Mr. Postings or, or, yeah.
Mr. Postings.
Through the Chair, to the Director. It's something that certainly we have a conversation with, with Alan about. I, I don't know what the timing is. I mean, certainly the initial plan was to have this done by September. And if there's additional work that, in engagement with the various councils. and if there's additional work that, in engagement with the various councils, that may, may. I, I don't know what, we can confirm it after this meeting. Him and I have spoken already in regards to this, but I don't have the answer right now. There's, if there's any additional costs or timing that may need to be adjusted.
Okay, thanks.
So any more? Sorry, Councilman Anhas, one sec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just, so Director Wilson, I want to start out the referral motion before we go back to the, the general discussion. So if we can clean that up and then we'll, I'll turn it back to Mr. Nielsen.
Yeah, my understanding of this, of this motion was that we take the preliminary findings back to our councils or you would, and then we would report back to, back to you. So there wouldn't be extra time of, of Mr. Nielsen coming out here or. It may delay, it may delay the time for the final stage, but I don't anticipate any extra cost for this.
Yeah, and we may have different views that I, I mean, I'd love to have Mr. Nielsen present to our council, but at the same time, I don't want to delay the project. So perhaps you can leave that to staff to figure out what's the most feasible. Mr. Nielsen?
Yeah, I wonder if I, just to, just to chime in, and I don't want to preempt any discussion I have to have with Clayton on this point. But I think that it, it may be valuable to actually participate in the discussion, for me to participate in the discussion rather than simply, I understand Director Manhas's point and I think it's a good point because it's a way to efficiently do it, but there may be some, some value in actually having a little bit of a discussion. I, even if that is the direction that the Board takes, I don't anticipate like a heavy extra burden on this. This is more of a, of a, I'm on the island quite a lot on different things. This is a touch in with each of the councils, putting information into the system, as it were. It's, it's, it might add a week or two to the overall deadline, but, but it will still be in September. So I don't think it's gonna be a huge deal.
Good, thank you. So we ready to call the question on this referral motion and then go back to the broader discussion? Director Morrison?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This is highly unusual and, and, you know, in, when the idea of it being brought up and to go back to our councils, the, the thought that immediately popped into my mind was, okay, well, we're, we're kind of changing the, the terms of reference to this and, and I'd like to take this back to the business community to see if the preliminary findings are, are on track with what the business community is thinking because I think that's hugely important. But I, I definitely think that if, if this package is gonna be going to our municipal partners, that it, it should go with the person that put the package together as opposed to. That would be akin to me going to the business community in Cowichin Lake and saying, okay, this is my interpretation of what Alan's put together. What do you think and tell me what I should bring back? So I think for consistency and, and, and professional process that Mr. Nielsen should be part of any referral back to, to our municipal partners. I, I, it just feels too variable to be sending it back with just a general discussion amongst our municipal partners without the author of the material there to, you know, properly answer questions and the like.
It's a package deal, right?
Take it or leave it, yes.
All right. So any further discussion on the referral? Yeah, okay, alternate Director Duncan.
Thanks.
And I know Director Wilson's waiting patiently, but you're first in line for the next part, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I believe you mentioned that we're only about a month and a half into this.
Correct.
I really think it's a little early to be going back to local groups. I, I think that you should continue on and then get a report to at a later date.
I think, thank you, if I may, through the Chair, to Director, alternate Director Duncan. I think that, I understand that your, your point. I think, and there may be, once the report has been submitted to the Board, there may be some follow-up even at that point for the Board or for staff or whomever or, or if you, if you wish me to do it, we can, we can cross that bridge when we get to it. But with the different stakeholder groups, including the, and with the member jurisdictions, I think what the, what the intention of the, of the motion was, and I think it's, it's not a bad intention, is that as we are putting together preliminary findings on a, for a service review that may change exactly how the service is constituted, which would be of interest to the jurisdictions that have participated or chosen to participate in the service, it may be beneficial to hear from the full councils on that. And so I think that that early check-in to inform the findings was the intention of, as opposed to present the, the report or present the final document.
Can I call the question now on the referral? All in favor and opposed? Directors Morrison, McClinton and alternate Director Duncan opposed. So we'll now move on, we'll move back to the more general discussion. I've got Director Wilson.
Yeah, and this may, this may be a question for Mr. Postings or perhaps our CAO. Looking at the Function 121 in Economic Development, Alan, it says, this function uses the requisition is, the function used of the requisition is provided with to leverage additional provincial and federal resources. Those resources, are they purely on paper or is there money there?
Yep, thank you, worship, uh, for the Chair. Yes, there is money.
Oh, okay.
So, so the money that was done, I'll look to, oh.
It was buried here? Take on.
Okay. There was the money for, I believe, the, the tech survey that, and there was, and the housing perhaps. And so there are a number of different pots of money that have been accessed through grant applications by the service to fund some of the different activities.
Good, okay. And obviously, I'd like to see a lot more of that being used if possible. Thank you.
Director Nicholson.
Thank you. The findings resonate with me, but I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
One is on the number eight one, can you give me some examples of the barriers?
The barriers? Well, one, some of the, now, these examples are examples that are, we, I can only refer to them as perceived barriers because these are the ones that were brought forward in the interviews. So one perceived barrier would be development approval processes. And I would, at the risk, I would, I would, I would suggest that the municipality of North Cowichin has identified that itself as a barrier because it's in your economic development action plan and because on another, I'm also doing some work on looking at those, at those processes for the municipality of North Cowichin. And so there are lots of different kinds of barriers around development applications and those things. That would be kind of the key one. There could be other barriers that have, well, some of the other barriers that came forward really were more along the lines of are we, are we, when we're making decisions as a Board, are we, or as a council, within, within the Cowichin Valley, are we looking at things through an economic development lens? Are we, are we encouraging partnerships with other groups? Those kinds of barriers. But the big one would be the approval processes for development to actually occur.
Okay. Can I continue? Okay, so, and one of the things I'm really interested in is your, there's nothing really in here that tells me apart from this intelligence advocacy thing, all-important, about the real value of having an economic development.
Yes.
So what is your kind of cut of it?
Well, there are two thoughts that come to mind in response to the question through the Chair, Director Nicholson. The first is that the value is going to be determined ultimately by the members. So by the participants in the service and the participants being the CVRD Board here and their jurisdictions. So value is one of those things that's in the eye of the beholder. If you perceive that the money you put in here gives you a return, then that's gonna, you're gonna find some value. Personally, what I find as value for a regional economic development service relates to monies that are spent, for example, on assessing the growth potential of the economy and where growth is gonna occur, not necessarily, not only geographically, but in what sectors. There's a lot of research, a lot of information that can be brought to bear on those types of, of questions and can help to make, help to direct decision-making. I would consider value as, as being a regional economic development function, convening different players around different tables. And we have a number of different, within our valley and within other regions, we see this all the time as well, but within the Cowichin Valley, we have a number of different agencies that are involved in some way or another in what we might term economic development. Some of that is going to be simply at focusing on the development of their own sector. Some is going to be on, on looking at things such as, as developing a labor force. And that can be in educational institutions, it can also be like Works BC, for example, or Community Futures, those kinds of things. They are going to, they are doing all of their own things and they're doing it in a way that is often not as connected as you might think, bringing together the different players. A neutral party or a party such as a regional economic development function, and we see this here and we see it in other places, is, is a, a natural body to convene those groups together to make sure there's some degree of coordination and some degree of shared strategy in what it is they're going to do. So there's that. I think there's also value in saying that when we look at the region as a whole, we want to understand where our assets are for the broader regional community. This ties back to, and I want to, I do have a question in here that I wanted to ask a little bit later. But this comes back to the idea of, the question, I guess, the premise that, that investment at a regional level helps everybody. It puts in place the conditions for growth to occur around the region. Now, growth may be focused in different parts of the region, in urban areas or depending on the growth, if it's agriculture, for example, more rural areas. But where growth occurs within the region is important because everybody benefits. And so bringing, so having the, the, the regional economic development function, look region-wide, have that perspective and say, we're going to start to to bring together the information we need to have so that for the region we can do an, an employment generating lands inventory for the entire region. We're going to look at growth around the region, where it needs to occur. So through a regional, regional planning function, for example, that ties into economic development. We're gonna be looking at transportation through the region and how we may then want to advocate for better transportation. So we see, and that, that leads us to another function that in my view, because you asked me about my interpretation of this, is important for a regional economic development function and can provide value, and that is advocacy. So advocating on behalf of the region and the businesses, the industries within the region to other levels of government in particular for investment in infrastructure that helps with mobility of goods and services, that helps with basic infrastructure to facilitate growth and development, those kinds of things. So I think the advocacy, the intelligence gathering and reporting out on that, on the economy as a whole, the convening the tables, those types of activities, in my view, for a regional function add value.
Good, thank you.
Alternate Director Finley.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Mr. Nielsen. As the Chair said, some of us at, weren't interviewed, being an alternate director, have strong opinions on, I'm one of those guys. So thanks for the information. One of the things that you talk about is tech, the tech industry, and a lot of people don't know this. We've talked about it at our, at our council table, is, there's actually quite a large animation industry here in the valley. And my niece is part of that. She actually works for Lucasfilm right now, which is pretty cool, and she just lives right over there. Cool. So that's neat to see and I'd love to see that, that expanded on. My view on economic development is, it's the three Ps and that is the planning, which is forcing us to do the right planning, you know, service industrial lands, that sort of thing. Promote and then, that's the other P, I can't say it publicly. So, so I'm.
Leave the room, I think it's the.
Yeah, leave the room. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to more discussions about this. I'm looking forward to a discussion at our table, perhaps at our own EDC meeting in July. I think would be great. I do have a question regarding some of your stakeholder discussions so far. I know you're still early in the process, but have you, have you had a chance to reach out to the large employers like Western Forest or Paper Excellence, Stonetour?
Thank you for the question. I haven't yet connected with those large employers, but happy to do so. And, and there may be value in doing that for sure, yes.
Director Abbott.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for keeping the, the creative juices flowing. I wonder, in the history of ACDEV here at the CVRD, might it help us and help readers of your research see some track records, some metrics, some accomplishments by previous EDs? I think of Jeff Miller and Amy Melmach and our current executive. And possibly, if you're doing comparative research, maybe similar regional districts that have an economic, and say, these are some of the accomplishments that your ACDEV departments can accomplish.
Yep, thank you. No, thank you through the Chair to Director Abbott. That's, that's a very helpful suggestion. And I think that what that, that research and what that, that story may demonstrate, and perhaps this is your point, because we see it in other places as well, is the evolution of the function and how it has maybe clarified where it's going and it has kind of determined, maybe in response a little bit to Director Nicholson's point earlier, it has determined through trial and error even, or kind of where it adds most value. And if we can demonstrate that, that may be helpful. Thank you.
Director McClinton.
Thanks, Chair. I have so much to say and I'm just, I'm struggling because it's like, I feel like I've said it all before and I don't want to just be, you know, be annoying. I feel like I've been pretty annoying today. You know, just an example of.
Very healthy self-reflection.
Yeah, like, like Lake Town Ranch, right? Eight, eight years to get that approved, right? A massive, in terms of economic development for a region, that would just be one example I'd give you. You know, where, I'm just wondering, you know, where you sit in terms of, you know, and, and, you know, the other thing with this whole process, you know, this review process is probably costing about the same as it would take just to keep the service going. So then this is part of.
I am not making $750,000, yeah.
But, no, but we're keeping staff on.
I'm happy to make that if that's.
Yeah, no, so these are some of the things that I'm just like, thinking about this service around, around how I think that in government, we're pretty bad at picking winners and losers and in general should try to stay out. I don't think many people go into business saying, oh, my government thinks that this is a good business idea. You know, I've started a few businesses and some have worked, some haven't. And I guess, you know, how, you, you obviously, you know, work for Nielsen and even worked with lots of different governments, lots of industry, like, where, how does like the, the Cowichin Valley sort of thinking about development fit in with, with other governments you see? Like, how, you know, can you maybe give us, you know, step back and just sort of see how, how our economic development and, and our Board fits into the broader picture around our region?
Sure. I, I can try, I can offer some observations, how about? I think, and, and the first observation is just to comment on, Director McClinton, on, on one of your points, that I would agree that, that governments we have seen at all levels are not terribly good at picking winners and losers. And so that, I think, suggests that what they should focus on, and that's a loaded term, should, because you'll determine that ultimately, but what, what they may wish to focus on instead is, is putting in place the conditions for economic development to occur, putting in place the conditions for the private sector to say, there are some advantages I see here and I'm going to invest here or I'm going to invest in this sector or I'm going to invest in this area or that kind of thing. So government's role, do we have the infrastructure in place? Do we have the intelligence in place? Do we have the resources people can tap into in order to understand the opportunities? You determine in the business sector what the opportunities are. We're out of your way then. We're clearing a path. So when we think, we'll look at the Cowichin Valley compared to other places from an economic development perspective, how does it fit in? British Columbia in general has a less developed economic development focus than other provinces and other places. If we look at the States, for example, we looked at Ontario, we've looked at other places, much more robust economic development focus there in a, in kind of a capital E, capital D. So services that have been set up for the purposes of growing the economy, bringing investment in. So right away then, being in British Columbia, we are kind of a little bit less, I don't want to say evolved, but less, less kind of, we, we have put less emphasis on those formal services than in other places. We have put more emphasis on things like tourism because everybody wants to come to British Columbia. So we're very good at doing destination marketing and those types of activities. Less good perhaps at doing, at looking at industrial investment and other types of investment there when we compare ourselves to other regions, kind of across Canada and into the US. One area, when we think about the regional district, when we look around British Columbia, there are not a lot of regional districts that do economic development or that, that have done it successfully over time. The term successful is a little bit loaded because often what happens is that stakeholder groups, participating jurisdictions within the regional districts tend to get frustrated with the economic development service because it's very difficult to show direct returns from the investments that are made. So if we look at Invest Vancouver, for example, which is the Metro Vancouver Regional Economic Development, that's run by the regional district, it's a fairly new body. It is a body that was, that is fairly new because it took a long time to convince the municipalities to buy into it because they weren't certain there was going to be any value. And it's still struggling because they're seen as spending a lot of money, trying to bring investment to the region without being able to show that direct return. bring investment to the region, without being able to show that direct return, because we're dealing with, we're dealing with services that put in place conditions, and you can't always connect those dots with the return, so it's very difficult. When we look at the South Island Partnership, for example, that's, that's a fairly new agency as well, I don't know how that's perceived, but it's fairly new. Central Economic and Economic Development Commission has been in place for some time. It has focused entirely on that upstream stuff, on doing the intelligence reports, on creating tables, on focusing on how to bring talent to the area. It's, how do we support from that agency, the efforts of the municipalities to drive growth? And they see their role very much as being the, the resource of information and of connections and so forth. So, there's, there's different, but it's under stress as well. So, a lot of places, I've tried this, not, it hasn't stuck in a lot of places. Couch and Valley Regional District has one of the longest track records in B.C., at a regional government level, regional district level, for having this service. And as Director Abbott just alluded to, it has gone through different phases. It's at a phase right now, I think, where the board is, is looking at this service and saying, okay, it's maybe not in the greater scheme of things, a huge amount of money, but it's, it's not an insignificant amount of money either. And more to the point, what exactly does it do? Because we, as the governing body, aren't sure of that. So, if we're going to have this in place, how do we deliver it? But more importantly, what are we going to have it do? And so what is the value that we perceive this entity being able to provide to us and to our constituencies? And that's really what, what the discussion, I think the most important discussion for the board to have is, what do we want this thing to do? And if there is something we want it to do, let's structure it that way. And if we can't think of anything for it to do, then you make the decision.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I clicked the button. Yeah, and I just want to say, like, I, you know, I've lived in lots of regions, and I've moved here to be in the Couch and Valley, I wake up every day with a view of the ocean. And, and as much as I would love more economic development, like, I've come to terms with it, and, but I, you know, I just don't want us to pretend that we're something we're not. Like, I watch our developers come here, and they, they look like they have PTSD when they stand up there, and it's, it's like, it's, you know, we have different priorities, and I just think we need to be honest with ourselves, and that's okay. And, and, you know, and I think the one exception that I've seen in my short time sitting here for three years is to do with agriculture. And there's been a few projects that have come through, that if it was any other industry, there's no way, in my opinion, humble opinion, it wouldn't have passed the board, it, I think it was the meat processing plant. So, perhaps that's an area, it seems that we all can get behind food security, and maybe there's a way that it can morph into that. But I just, I just really want us to take a good, hard look in the mirror, and realize what moves through, past this board table. So, thank you for listening.
And, and I think if I may, Chair, said your worship again, sorry, Chair. Through to Director McLintock, yes, well said, and I think that, that what I took away from your, your, your last comment there, however, was agriculture. Hearing from everybody, what we're doing with agriculture to seed investment, to set the groundwork there, to encourage others and build capacity in that sector, because it's so important, and we have a competitive advantage, is working. That seems to be a widely held view among directors and among stakeholder groups in the region. That tells me that if we can do it with agriculture, there may be some others as well, that we're, where we can put our energies. And so, I think that through some concentrated thinking around value and around examples from other places, and around where we may want to, to really put the dollars that we have chosen as a board to invest in this, in this function, there may be something that we can create out of this that provides huge value in the same way agriculture does.
Director Morrison.
Thank you Chair. On your questions, yes, it resonates, value of economic development Couch, and I guess that's what we're here to discuss. A number of points, thank you for clarifying the upstream versus downstream, because, and I think Director Douglas, and I'm thinking maybe Director Nicholson were around when we went through this the last time?
The Jerry Berry Review.
2014, maybe?
2014, 2015, yeah.
Yeah, and what's so curious about this is, I think we're asking almost exactly the same questions, what's the value, what do they do? And, and you've clearly helped us to understand the upstream versus downstream, but the same questions that were asked then are being asked now. How many new jobs have been created? How many new businesses have been attracted to, to the Valley? And when we came out of that last one, I thought that Ekdev was on its course of those upstream activities with a lot of the work that they did. And, and you just mentioned agriculture, which is, I think that, that Economic Development Couch and stepped in and has done some great work with Couch and Green Communities, the land matching programs, a number of those items. But Director McLintock is, is bang on in that, what have we done, not only on the front side of directing them to do the activities with Economic Development Couch, and direct the activities we want them to do, but when they did the industrial land inventory, which we have this huge shortage of, what have we have, as a group, done to increase the supply of industrial lands? Which I think is a big goose egg. So, I'm, I'm encouraged by the preliminary findings at this point, and I think that this is a little bit of Groundhog Day as far as the last time we did this. So, you know, I want to keep going, I want to see that if we're going to mainly focus on upstream activities, which is very hard to quantify, that we give them marching orders to do that. But if we, as a group, want more specified, measurable activities to be carried on by Economic Development Couch, and we have to not only direct them to do it, but own it too, when it comes back to us.
Thank you very much, through, through the Chair, State Director Morrison, I, very well said. And, and I think that when we, the questions that were asked in 2014, that's 11 years ago, so I would expect these kinds of questions to come up regularly, which is why we do service reviews. And, and of course, that's a little bit self-serving, because I do service reviews. So, we should do them every year. But, but, but in all seriousness, we do them periodically because things change. I think that there is, and, and you talked about the upstream, the upstream is so important and so difficult to get behind and support all the time, because there is a, a difficulty on the part of the service to demonstrate, to measure the success of that, the impact of that. And there's consequently a difficulty on the part of the elected officials to go to your taxpayers and say, this is money well spent. Because you won't owe this for another 10 years, but it's money well spent, believe me. So, so I think what happens then is we get a little bit of scope creep. And so when we look at our last strategic plan from 2018, we see in there clearly that one of the things we want to do is support businesses, which means, and it's actually listed in there as a metric, we want to, we want to visit 60% of the businesses in the region every year. And I think of that as a waste of time. So, it's, it's, if I'm being completely frank, because it doesn't kind of use our resources well. That's a lot of time to hear about legitimate concerns, about which we may not be able to do very much. And so, but we can do a lot of other things when we put those funds into, into some of those upstream endeavors. The difficulty then, or the challenge, I think, if the board chooses to take that route, is to say, how do we keep in front of the board, on a regular basis, enough information, and enough, and, and information also, and feedback from the broader community, from the business community, from the other economic development players in the community, to demonstrate, or at least to help us understand, and to help us tell the story about how the upstream investment is good? If we can't tell the story, then we can't defend it, and if we can't defend it, we can't keep it.
Director Deck.
Thank you, thank you. This, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm really grateful for this conversation, because in, like, Area I, for example, I'm, we're surrounded by, 95% of us surrounded by managed forest land. And I think we've relied heavily in the, in the past on resource extraction, and it's really been easier to do that than to do the hard work of diversification. And so I'm, I'm grateful for the focus you've put on doing the work to look beyond, you know, think outside our box and, and find, build that, what, how would you put it? Put in place conditions for attracting diverse, more diverse work, jobs.
Great. I like you.
Businesses.
Thank you.
Director Abbott.
I'm just looking around to make sure that there aren't other comments from members of the community, of the board. Because I'd like to say, I'm a bit embarrassed at the abundance of Couch and Bay photographs contained in your report, and I'd encourage you to reach out to my other colleagues, the seven other, eight other regions, four other municipalities for the photo display.
There's a new one.
Well, thank you.
Hey, if I could just add a comment with regards to your, I think it's the third question there. The challenge I've always found, at least in with North Couch and's relationship with the Regional Economic Development Function, is that we're, we're almost 200 square kilometers, and we don't have a clearly defined center. We've got Shemainus, which is a town in its own right, Crofton, Maple Bay, a lot of what we think of Duncan is actually North Couch, and we share a border with one another. So it's a, it's a large area to begin with, very distinct business communities in each different business sectors. So you've got that 200 square kilometer landmass, which is, almost feels unmanageable in terms of how we're going to approach it with regards to economic development. And then you look at the larger region, almost 3,500 square kilometers, and it's, it is, it is a large area to, to cover, and maybe it is the, the best approach in terms of economic development on a region such large, is that more high-level upstream focus? But it, it is a lot of land to, to cover, and when you go from Ladysmith down to Mill Bay, from Maple Bay out to, to Lay Couch on the West Coast, it's very distinct communities and, and geography as well.
I, I understand, yes. Thank you Chair for that, that comment, and I think you're absolutely right, it's, that really captures the challenges of the region, and also of the function. And how do we, because when I, when you, you make those points, what I'm thinking of is, is we've got these, I mean, within North Couch, and we've got four very distinct communities, within, probably more actually, within, within the region as a whole, we have many more than that. And how do we, as a regional function with limited resources, how do we ensure that, that we're providing value to the, the broader collective? Again, based on the premise, which is important, that, to think about it, if, if we, if we accept the premise, that is, that growth in the region, investment, looking at the regional level as opposed to the local level, and any benefit that comes from that investment in, in the form of investment into the region, or economic growth, development that occurs, those kinds of things. If we accept the premise that that development in the region is good for the region as a whole. If we take the view instead that, that for, in order to benefit a jurisdiction, the specific change has to happen within individual, individual jurisdiction, that's also a legitimate view, but typically that's when we do a local economic development function. Because then we can say, okay, the region's taken care of, we can, because these things will often dovetail, they, they will often come together, and we see that in Metro Vancouver, we see that in Victoria, we see that in, in other regions, we see it a lot in Ontario, where you've got regional municipalities, basically, or regional, or broader, upper tier, they call them upper tier, governments with a number of municipalities under them, and you'll have kind of the, the overlapping functions, because they do different things. So if we want to look at the, at helping to kind of develop individual communities within the region, which is a very legitimate pursuit, and very important, my suggestion is the regional function may not be the best vehicle for that. Because it's going, you just don't have the resource base, you don't have the resources in the service to provide an equitable approach to that.
Further discussion? Director Beeston, and then back to Director McLintock.
Just with regards to the keeping and attracting business, like, it's, it, it sounds really nice to do, but from what I've been looking into, we have very limited ability to do that, especially larger industry and larger technologies, because there are so many things, like, they, when someone's going to establish a business, they look at things like employee satisfaction, housing, medical schools, they look at market access, they look at raw material availability, they look at transportation, they, they look at so many other things. Like, it's, it's nice to say, oh, we'd like to attract some businesses to Ladysmith, but it's not like there's a list out there that we can go, oh, we'll have one of these, and one of these, and one of these. We have to make ourselves the most attractive proponent for them to want to come to our community and invest. And that goes hand in hand right now with our housing, with our, you know, can, can people who come to work there get a doctor? Things like that. So it's, it's a very, very convoluted system that we're trying to work through.
And, and that, if I may, Mr. Chair, yes, thank you Director Beeston, I think that, that's, that's really well said, and I think it, it, and I liked, I just made a note as you were speaking there, because you're quite right, when we think about individual businesses, and whether they're small businesses or large businesses, but if we think of ones that generate employment, what do they, how do they make their decisions on where to locate and whether to be in a particular community? And as you pointed out, the types of, the types of information that they're going to be thinking about, the determining factors, if you will, or the influencing factors at least, are going to be everything from the raw materials, I'm going to, your list, you put down the raw materials, and I had to do it, the transportation routes, and the mobility within an area, the government regulatory environment that governs at the local level, the regional level, the provincial level, the housing opportunities as well, and the living opportunities, the labor market dynamics, all of those kinds of things will play into, will inform the decision, location decisions, the investment decisions of different businesses. And we need to help them, well, I shouldn't say that, that's very definitive, different regional economic development functions will often play the role of helping to provide, to bring that information together and provide that intelligence to different investors, different businesses that are looking to invest, because they need to understand all of those points in order to make a decision on where to put their money. They'll also need then, in, in order to put, to make sure that we have the proper conditions in place, that's where advocacy comes in. So if we, through the intelligence we gather, if we understand that we don't have a functioning of a mobility network, if we don't have transportation corridors that actually work in the area, then we need to then, as a function, start to advocate for that. And we, and we leverage through our partnerships that we've developed as that function, all of the sources that we, all of the resources we can to help us in that advocacy. And, and if we've determined that we need healthcare, because without healthcare, we're not going to get that kind of investment, then again, we work with others, our partners, and we leverage all that, that knowledge and all of those resources, and we advocate for healthcare. And we find different ways of doing it, we do it obviously through the provincial government in our case, but we also then look at local alternative. Can we set up primary care centers? Can we do what View Royal has done, and, or Callwood has done, in, in Victoria, and create our own systems? Those kinds of things. All of that information comes to bear, but I like how you put that though, because it, it illustrates that what businesses really, or perhaps how a regional function can help businesses the most is by providing the intelligence they need, and the advocates they need to have the conditions in place to make those investment decisions.
Okay, we got a couple more. I know Director McLintock, you're waiting, but I'm going to go to a first timer here with Director Calio.
Thank you Chair. Director Beeston, I was not going to say anything, but I'd just like to say that it's an excellent report, and I appreciate you coming here, Mr. Nielsen, and I think you brought up some really great discussions at this table. But listening to what Director Beeston had to say, and, and that is that if you want to attract people, you have to have the right parameters to get them to come here. And so, one of those is daycare, and looking at your report, I, I did not see anything in there about daycare. And I know from personal experience that I've just acquired a new doctor, thank goodness, because my other one's retired. But when I was speaking to her for the first time, she was telling me that she's come to town. And one of the hardest things that she had to deal with was trying to acquire daycare for herself, and she finds that if, if you want to have other doctors, or professionals, or workers, or, you know, doesn't matter what level you're speaking of, they need some kind of daycare. And, you know, if you, if you don't have daycare, people can't go to work. Without those workers, there's no economic development. So, my question is, how does daycare kind of work into the economic development?
Thank you very much to the Chair, to, to Director Calio. So, I, it's a very good question, and I think daycare is, is clearly a, a resource that needs to be in place in order to get the- in order to get the type of diverse labor force that you're looking to get. Particularly, as you mentioned, if we're dealing with different professional groups as well, who are looking for a place to bring their families in to invest. So daycare, similar to healthcare, similar to, um, uh, labor opportunities for spouses, all those kinds of things. They're all part of that environment that different groups, different governments, in this case a regional district, put resources in to try to put in place, so try to influence it. So first of all, identify where are our gaps? Why aren't people coming? Why are we challenged in getting investment here? Is it a shortage of industrial land? Is it a shortage of services like daycare? If, once we know that information then, how do we effect change? How do we, through advocacy, through convening tables and bringing together different, uh, healthcare providers and social providers, social service providers and, and daycare providers? How do we bring all those people to the table to figure out how we can best fill those gaps? So I think that convening the table, that getting that information, that advocating, those things again being, in my view, important functions to consider for a service such as this.
Thank you.
Director McClinton.
Thanks, I'll keep it brief and I, I promise to have a question. You know, one of the first reports, uh, that we got was from Ekdev and it was about the workforce housing. And I just was thinking, man, this is what a wonderful report. This is so great. And it, and then project after project, we're just saying, we need, we need more from our, from our developers in order to move these things forward. So, and it, you know, just brings me back to this service and what we're doing. And I'm just curious about what the percentage is, if we know, maybe Ekdev knows, maybe you know, of like the home-based business to industrial. I mean, I know in, in my area and many areas on the island, people do their businesses from home because that's all they have. I know, you know, light, uh, light trucks with two axles, they, he has no idea. He can't park two of those trucks in his driveway, but, you know, he's got nowhere to take them even if we wanted to kick them out, um, you know, and that's one of the bylaws. So just, you know, supporting those home businesses, I think, is the easiest thing that we can do. That's a win-win for everybody. And so just your thoughts on that. What, what's the percentage of home businesses in, in our area and what do you think of that?
It's probably Stats Canada would have that, I'm assuming.
I, I think so, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I, I can't, I can't give the exact percentage. I, I, I absolutely accept the idea that the percentage has increased and will continue to increase. And I think that's a function of, well, our experience through COVID, when we realized we could do it. And also, uh, the experience you talked about earlier, I don't know why you moved here, because you love being overlooking the water, you love kind of the area. So you want to, you don't want to be driving all the time and all that. And then perhaps fundamentally, most fundamentally, the, the, um, the broadband capabilities, the wireless, all those kinds of things. So I think that, that the more we have those in place, the more we're going to get there. So I absolutely accept the premise that that's continuing to go. And what do I think about that? I think that, that it is, uh, home-based business is a, is a segment of kind of the workforce, if you will, of the economy that is one, um, that a, an economic development agency would be able to point to and say, here's a growing phenomenon. We know this, we see this not only in the Cowton Valley, by the way, we see it all over British Columbia beyond, in the, in the, um, Elk Valley, for example, in the, in the East Kootenays, like massive influx of home-based businesses because of COVID and they've just stayed. So we see this on Couch and Valley as well. So, uh, how an economic development function would look at that and say, okay, we know this is going to be important. What do we need to ensure this can succeed? How do we facilitate the growth of this function? And as you pointed out, Director, there's going to be things such as, you know, do we have in place in our member municipalities, at our regional district, uh, in our local area planning? Do we have in place the regulations that in a thoughtful way provide for people to be able to base their businesses from home where appropriate, given different types of businesses? Do we have in place the connectedness? Do we have the infrastructure in place? And if we don't, how do we get that? What strategy, whom do we need to bring to a table to figure that out? Do we have in place the, uh, the, the immigration policies that, that are beyond our control, but there's something that we can start to influence and through advocacy look at? Because we want to bring people here who can operate in that. Because home-based businesses are international. People are connected, exporting things all over the world, knowledge. So all of those things I think are so important to, uh, through advocacy, through convening tables again, to create the conditions to allow home-based businesses, using that example, to grow if that's something that we think is an important part of our economy.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any further hands up, Mr. Nielsen, is, there's another slide, right?
Uh, well, it was, it was, you know what? This, this was more on the, on the other bits. And this, uh, this, this last, last question, maybe we can defer because it may take us for another couple hours. But I'm being a little bit facetious. But, uh, perhaps, perhaps these ones we can think of as more rhetorical, uh, Mr. Chair, in the sense that just given the time and I, I know the, the board's been here all day. But, but in terms of where the function to fit, this is where we're talking about the delivery model. And so coming back to the board with some options on that and some pros and cons, I think would, would, is going to be important. And the other then, when we think about governance and cost sharing, and I talked earlier about those core elements that exist in every shared service. So the vision and the scope of services, the definition of the service, if you will, what it does, what it exists to do, the cost sharing of the service and the governance of the service, how we make decisions. If we deal with the former, that first one, that vision and scope, we still need to think about those other two at some point. Maybe that's beyond our initial kind of service review at this point, but they do kind of creep in. It's hard to keep them all separate from one another because what happens in one tends to influence the other. And I know from my discussions with directors, that who's at the table and how people participate in setting priorities is very important. And how, if we choose to keep this service in-house, for example, which, and I won't prejudge what the, what the decision is going to be on that, how do we then make sure that we are getting, as, as Director Morrison alluded to earlier, how do we make sure we're getting the input from the business community that we need to have on a regular basis? Do we look at some kind of advisory committee that has struck? That's something that's very common in regional economic development functions. So the whole governance framework is something to have at the back of our minds, perhaps right now, when we figure out what the board wishes to do with the service in terms of, of its priorities and in terms of its, its scope of, of activities. So yes, long story short, we can put this off.
Well, I want to, behalf of the committee, want to thank you for your, your presentation. As, as you're well aware, we've grappled with this, this function for a number of years in terms of what exactly we want to get out of it. And there's certainly a lot of different perspectives around the board. Yeah, I look forward to you delivering us all this similar presentation to my council and the other, other municipal councils and to seeing your recommendations come back to, uh, this committee or our board at some point in the fall.
Thank you Chair. And I, and I will just emphasize as well as you just alluded to, that, that it is still, we're still at the first half of this. So the preliminary findings, I'm grateful to directors for the questions, for the comments, because they helped to refine things a little bit. There'll be more findings coming forward and I really look forward also to the feedback from the individual councils too. So thank you very much.
All right, so that is, we, we did have the referral motion, but this, this was for, um, this was for information. So we can now move on to question period. I don't see any members of the public in the gallery. So that concludes our business and I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Director Segal, seconded by ultimate Director Duncan. All in favor and opposed? Unopposed motion.